Welcome to our June Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to abide by the United States of America and to adhere to the principles of which we make in this room, but let me be just as thorough.
Colored O'Frye.
Here.
Judy Boucher.
Here.
John Keane.
Here.
Scott Latham.
Here.
Brian Tilghman. In the event of emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door and be directly into the parking lot. In the event of emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobile since this may cause traffic problems at block 1001.
Thank you. Hi, have a seat. This brings us to the first hearing of visitors. At this time, we request questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Anybody care to address the board now? Is Mr. Flanagan?
Mr. Flanagan is here. Do you want to go see where he walked out to?
But we can just move along, right?
Yeah, we can move along. It's not a full after-hour presentation.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of our May 25 meeting, our bills, our treasures report, our monthly budget status report for May, transfers, and we got the additional transfer, extra classroom activity fund, contracted service for the next school year, the health services contract for this past school year, and the intermunicipal cooperation agreement for next school year for the shared director of facilities, and also the intermunicipal cooperative agreement for the shared director of educational technology. We're surplusing some stuff. And then there's retention and destruction of the 2021 election ballots. I don't have to read that resolution, please. And CSEs that were provided to us. Are there any questions or comments on any of those?
Nope.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? Now, we're going to go through these reserves, and I'm going to read them really, really fast. This is what we do every June, and it's just up to amounts, correct Chuck? And then in the fall, when we know the actual dollars, then we put them in. Be it resolved, this is the Capital Reserve Fund, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby authorize and direct that a sum not to exceed $950,000 of unassigned, unappropriated surplus from the 2021-2022 budget be transferred to the Capital Reserve Fund previously established pursuant to 3651 of the education law. Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Retirement Contribution Reserve, the ERS/TRS, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the additional funding of the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund originally established in 2007 pursuant to municipal law 6R in the amount not to exceed $250,000 for ERS subfund and $250,000 for TRS subfund to be funded from the unassigned, unappropriated fund balance remaining from the 2021-2022 budget.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Workers' Compensation Reserve Fund, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the additional funding of the Workers' Compensation Reserve Fund originally established in 2008 pursuant to municipal law 6J in the amount not to exceed $150,000 to be funded from the unassigned, unappropriated fund balance remaining from the 2021-2022 budget. Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve, resolve that the Board of Education does hereby authorize and direct that a sum not to exceed $600,000 be transferred from unassigned, unappropriated surplus from the 2021-2022 budget to the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve Fund previously established pursuant to 6P of the general municipal law. Motion?
So moved.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unemployment Insurance Reserve, resolve that the Board of Education does hereby authorize and direct that a sum not to exceed $100,000 be transferred from the unassigned, unappropriated surplus from the 2021-2022 budget to the Unemployment Insurance Reserve previously established pursuant to 6M of the general municipal law. Motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Sorry, all in favor? Repair Reserve Resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby authorize and direct that a sum not to exceed $700,000 of unassigned, unappropriated surplus from the 2021-2022 budget be transferred to the Repair Reserve Fund previously established pursuant to general municipal law 6D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all those funding business. Any old business? Do you want to switch the grant presentation with the superintendent's report?
The grant's presentation is before the superintendent.
Yeah.
I know it. Do you want to switch it and do the student presentation first, is what I'm saying.
You want to do the student recognition first, Steve?
Sure.
Okay.
Right, I mean, because it's supposed to, she may want to.
Sure.
Is that okay?
They're trying to give you an opportunity to duck out on us before the presentation part, just so that you know, so you can thank them when you come up for pictures.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Good evening, welcome, everybody. Thank you to the Board of Education and our administrators. Thank you for everybody being here tonight. It's definitely the end of June, but thank you, and it's important that we still recognize all of our student athletes and all the accomplishments they had this year. I'm going to rearrange the order a little bit, just so we can put our people that are present up front. This first team, our girls, our girls track team, it's a combined team with the Greenport School District as well, and this year, we saw a lot of success, not only as a team, but individually. And I think this is the first, since I've been here at least, the first county champ that we've had for our track program, and it's something significant because not only the first that we've ever had, but it's from an extremely young athlete, a sophomore right now, that is very focused. She puts in a ton of work. She works with the coaches extra, just to make sure she's honing her craft. When I see those things, I get excited because I know the next two years are going to be something special. So our first award will go to, and forgive me in advance, I'm going to work on this before you graduate, but Olivia Mishkowicz has finished all county, by all county honors from Section 11, and she finished Class C County High Jump Champion for Southhold School District. Congratulations, Olivia. Come on up.
Olivia, how do you pronounce it?
Shukavich.
I still can't pronounce it.
I will definitely work on it. Great job, Olivia. There's a lot of success. Thank you to her family. They're very supportive, so thank you and great job, Olivia. Just to recognize a few other athletes that we go through, this year, we also had a few athletes finishing all league, which is a nice honor as well, and there's a sophomore in there also, I believe, Gabriella Byfoco finished all league, Francesco Lynch finished all league, and Emilio Hoods, our senior, finished all league as well, so congratulations to all of them. Boys Track and Field had another successful year as well. Didn't get a county champion, but their numbers of their honors that they received from Section 11 was really impressive. We won two, three, four, we had eight all-league runners this year. Again, I think it's the highest that we've ever had. This is a direct result, I think, of also our feeder program at the middle school level with John Palmieri and Pete Salerno working that at the younger levels, where we're seeing more participation here from Southhold, and a higher level of athlete also, because they're coming in ready to go, they know the expectations, and we're seeing the results, and it's a really nice thing to see. We have one of the all-league runners here today. This is somebody I've been watching since you've been, you know, young, you know, eighth, ninth grade, and I can see the progression, and again, you see a certain something in the eye when somebody of an athlete, and Matthew's got that eye. He takes things serious when he's out there. He's a competitor, he's a gamer, and I see him put it all out there when he's running the track, so congratulations to Matthew Mollmer, finishing all-league this year. Come on up, bud.
Matt, what do you run?
What events, Matthew?
What events do you run?
I run the 800, four-by-four, and the 400.
Matthew's busy. Good job, Matthew. I'm just going to, we'll do our applause at the end, but I will recognize all of our all-league runners for the boys track and field team this year. Wyatt Carter, Robert Dorrin, Luke Gibbs, Jack Kozinski, Christopher Palencia, who's an eighth grader, John Tunk, who's an eighth grader, and Tristan Zugmeyer, all finished all-league this year. Congratulations. All right, moving along to boys baseball. Boys baseball, we had a successful season, making it back to the championship game this year. We had a senior-heavy team that put in a big effort, made plenty of sacrifices to return to the championships. They made sacrifices for each other, for the team, and it was really nice to see. They came up a little bit short, but it was something that I know when we had them here and going to see them in other games, there's always a spark there with these seniors. There's, I believe, eight of them, and they've been tightly knit throughout their time here and their careers here. I think they had a, I think we pulled up seven of them their eighth-grade year, and they had been on the varsity level all throughout, so it's really a nice thing to see. The boys had that success, and we have a lot of great kids, like Mr. Okula over here. He really puts out a strong effort every year, and I know that he's fond of his memories here with the baseball team, as all the boys are. But we had a lot of finishes this year. I just want to recognize Coach Greg Tully and Assistant Coach Pissacano for all the hard work with the team this year. Tom Cardy, Tom Cardy finished with an all-county finish and also a member of the second-place team this year, so great job to Tom. Daniel Cartellos was also a member of the team. Robert Corazini got a leadership award this year. Carson Cornell also a leadership award, and he's going to be a senior, graduating senior. Brendan Duffy, he's one of our guys, like all the guys put in the work, but Brendan, you can see, was doing a lot of the extras, a lot, a lot of the extras, and it showed. He's an all-county player this year from Section 11, and he's going to continue on his career at the college level playing for Oneonta, which is going to be exciting to see next year. Harley Earl was a member, and he's going to be unfortunately moving to Florida, but he was a great addition to our team this year at the varsity level. William Frey going to be moving on to Texas, we're going to miss him as well, but again, a strong effort that he's put in here. Gavin Frederick, we had finish all-league, nice, strong finish. Bryce Keels is a member this year with Alex Lopez. Dylan Lumen was given the courage award by Section 11 as well, which is quite an honor, and his dedication to the team, he was pulled up his eighth-grade year, which is really nice. Luke Lumen, we had a sophomore this year, finished with all-county honors, did a great job, and I know he's here. David Okula was a, he's going to get the leadership award this year for all of his efforts throughout the years, and he's going to be a graduating senior. We wish him all the best in the future. David. We also have Jack Sepinaski in the lineup this year for us, James Trehan, Jay Traumontana, and Connor Walensky finished with all-league honors, which is a very nice thing to see for Connor. Connor's one of those kids, you see him on the sideline, you know he's fit and ready to play every game. It was a joy to watch him throughout his career, and he finished in all-league, finishing strong his senior year, so congratulations to the boys baseball team and all of our all-league and Southhold Leadership Award winners. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our softball program. Softball recently has been combined with the Metta Talk and Greenport School District, and we had Coach Gerstung, who's retiring this year, but she had the opportunity to take the program over, where she was a longtime coach for Metta Talk and took us over, and I think it was exactly what we needed to lay the foundation down to have a successful future. They had an up-and-down season this year, but they were constantly developing, constantly growing. They had a tough game against Cinemerces, where they were basically mercied, and then by the playoff time, when they saw that team again, they had closed the gap, I think it was a four-run game, so they got Cinemerces on their heels a little bit, but it was nice to see. And again, that the program has everything it needs to be successful, so we're going to be excited for the future. And we have a junior this year who finished with all-league honors, Brianna McFarland, and we have a graduating senior, Ella Saffino, who we're going to give the Southhold Leadership Award to, so great job, ladies, and look forward to your future, Brianna. Thank you. Give me one second, sorry.
Crowd's getting restless.
All right, so the, we have girls lacrosse, and the boys and girls programs this year, I think, had a lot of opportunities to play out on the turf, which is great for them, everywhere from the junior high program, all the to the varsities and JVs. So for us, it's nice to really just walk in our backyard and watch them play, the development of the program, they have new coaches over there, and we're fortunate to have Coach Appel here, who is our representative for Southhold, that has a lot of knowledge base and is taking the girls where they need to be. This year, we had a senior, junior, finish all-division. She's exciting to watch play, she's an impact player, and it's only going to get better from here. Megan Tobin finished with all-division honors. Congratulations, Meg. And boys lacrosse, the two that we have this year are the Clipstone Brothers. We have Tate and Flynn. Both are really strong athletes, dedicated to what they do. Flynn is a sophomore this year, plays all-division, which is a really significant thing for lacrosse. It's very competitive, so let's give it up for Flynn. And Tate, Tate this year is graduating, but Tate is one of our most committed players that we have in any program. He's a great influence for Flynn, I'm sure, but Tate, we're going to give the Southhold Leadership Award to, as well-earned, well-deserved. Congratulations, Clipstones. And moving along with boys tennis, boys tennis has a few seniors this year, but next year, we are junior-heavy. I think we have 12 juniors coming up in the lineup. Had a lot of success this year, they beat a strong Ross team, and they got a number four seed this year, and they went pretty far, but once you get it to like a Bayport Blue Point, where you have those tennis courts in the backyard, it gets a little tough. But it's, it's nice to see a lot of our student athletes are finishing all-league, all-division honors, again, an uptick. You know, I think we always had a couple, a few, this year, we have five, you know, so every year, we're getting a little bit more. Quincy Brimlin this year had all-division honors, Robert Cooper finished with all-league honors, Calvin Carson finished with all-league honors, Jalen Olson, all-division honors, and Matthew Schill with all-league honors. Clap for award winners. And that's all of our sports teams this year for the spring. It was a wonderful year. David, we wish you the best of luck, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Can I ask all three of you guys to please come up and take a picture with us, if you could? And you, Mr. Flanagan?
Sure, thank you. Bring your certificate. Thank you, Mr. Keel.
You guys are going to take a picture?
I'm not standing next to Olivia.
Okay. No way. You guys have to stay far away from me and Mrs. O'Frye.
Or Mr. Latham.
All right?
You guys keep them behind you, all right?
Maybe we could stand on the risers, Judy.
You want to stand on the risers?
Yes.
Ratty sweatshirt.
Oh, my goodness. Of course you can jump.
I said I'm not standing next to her.
We understand that, too.
There you go, Molnar, good man.
Oh, that's a good picture.
Yeah, it's very similar.
Judy wants to do something before you move on to your next question.
On behalf of the robotics team, they were here for a presentation, one of our last board meetings, and of course, the thing that they wanted to present to you came the day after in the mail. So this, I'm going to present it to Mrs. O'Frye and Dr. Morrow. It is for the school, it's a tile. And you can decide where you want to hang it.
Yep. Thank you, Judy.
We'll try and get kids here to do it.
You guys can all stay right where you are.
Yeah, sure.
Yep, you have a copy of the presentation.
Yep.
The only person that has to move is Pat. Right, me and you, Patty?
Yes, she might come up.
So grant presentations, I can see why everybody came out, exciting. You know, there's been a lot going on in the last couple of years, as everybody knows. Two of the largest impacts financially that we've had since the pandemic have been the allocation of the American Rescue Plan and the CARISA funding. The Coronavirus Response Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act is what that means. You know, as, the easiest way to explain it is that they put together all of these grants and this grant money, and then they built the airplane in the air. So we would get an allocation, and then six months later, be told how we had to use it or could use it. Or we would start spending it for the first six months, and then be told, well, you also have to do all these different things. This is one of the newer requirements, is a presentation about them, and it became required a couple of months ago, but it's not terribly different than the fact that after a year of it, they said that we had to get feedback from our community and all of our constituent groups. Now, luckily for us, we had done much of that. We had put out surveys about our summer camp, and we had asked the board, and we had asked teachers and different people on how we could possibly utilize some of this money. The hard part is that it's very strictly regimented in what you can and can't use. So tonight's presentation will hopefully share some information with the community, and this is stuff the board has heard already, but you know, it'll hopefully share information with the community about some of the things that they may see going on here in the next few months, and realize, you know, where the funding is coming from for them and what's going to happen. So Chuck and I will be presenting together, he's going to explain some of the allocations.
Great, thank you. So the first one, just kind of a little bit to go into detail, is the American Rescue Plan allocation. So Southold, we were allocated $1,177,000 and change. That number is given to us, it's based on, I believe, similar how funds are dispersed to school districts based on title funds. As you see, the expenses, they go back to when the pandemic started in March of 2020, and this grant ends in September of 2024. This is federal funding, this affects, we do have a separate federal audit, called a single audit, where we do have an audit firm come in to review the procedures and everything for the grants.
And because it's a grant, it doesn't have to be paid back, correct?
What do you mean?
Because it's a grant, it does not have to be paid back or reimbursed?
It doesn't have to be paid back, right, meaning that we have to spend, right, we have a budget, we plan, they get approved for it, and then we spend the money, and then we apply for the funds, and we get reimbursed dollar-for-dollar up to that 1.1 million.
Is that 1.1 million guaranteed?
Um.
As guaranteed as the government can, you know?
Similar to state aid, it's a good number, is it guaranteed? It's one of those, you know, sometimes grants are not, they don't have an ending, end date, you got to be careful because you don't want to wait, because they definitely could be done. So it's a very good number, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say I guarantee it, but it's, we definitely want to spend it, and this is the late, the grant that ends the longest, so when that's, to me, we definitely want to make sure we spend the CARISA grant first because it ends a year earlier, but most of the time, we're really not going to spend too much towards the end of it, so we will spend it relatively soon, and we can apply for it early, maybe after, you know, maybe at the end of the next year, we might apply for it to get some of the funds in.
How long does it take to get the funding back after we spend it? Because we have spent our money, right?
How do we get it back? Right, it's similar to, not the procedures, but the other grants, we apply for the grants, describe the dates, purchase order, check dates, all the backup, and we apply through the, it's called the FS-10F finals, just again, it's just a typical grant reporting, and as long as it agrees to our budget and there's no other questions, sometimes they do have questions on it, but then you're allowed to receive, again, that set percentage amount, the amount that you claim, as long as we spent it.
How quickly, though?
How quickly do we get that?
How quickly?
Are we reimbursed?
I mean, some districts might do, it probably takes within 90 days, once we apply, but again, we think we can apply as often as we want, but right, typically, the procedures, you definitely, the ending date you apply, it has to be 90 days until after September 24 is the last date.
But it takes us about three months to get the money back?
It takes about three months, again, if they review, it could be a little longer with any questions, but again, if everything's in line, everything agrees, it's typically about 90 days.
Yeah, so, you know, Chuck spoke very briefly about the 1.177 million, and you know, when we asked about that allocation, they told us it was because of our Title I funding. We don't really know where they came up with either of those numbers, quite honestly, because we have neighboring districts who have very, very similar numbers or even higher numbers than us that got less money than that. We have other districts who are almost identical to us that got a third of the money of that. So similar to much of what's going on with all of this, it's coming and going so quickly that there isn't a great deal of explanation. We did check on it multiple times. Like Chuck said, it is a very solid number, we don't expect that, you know, like guarantee and federal funding, I would never use them in the same sentence, but the federal funding like this has been very consistently supplied the way they say it will be. So, up funding allowable activities, these are some of the ones that we have already budgeted for and started using. Anything that returned kids to in-person instruction, addressing the academic impact of lost instructional time. We have, you know, we have allocated funding for teachers to work with kids that have missed time, technology pieces, after-school learning activities, tutoring activities, things like that that relate to those. Planning and implementing activities related to summer learning and enrichment and supplemental after-school programs, the enrichment camp, and some of the different programs after-school, credit recovery. We have purchased a great deal of educational technology. We tried to sync up the utilization of these grants with our five-year technology plan that we organized, you know, so we kind of lined them up together. So the purchase of the 200 Chromebooks that we do a year, we put these into the grant because they fit the grant. They fit very well into the guidelines of the grant, and we want to turn over our Chromebooks every four to five years, so that means we need to purchase a couple hundred every year. Credit recovery programs, purchasing educational technology, and then school facility repairs also fits into it. So that has allowed us, you know, to do the work on the ventilation and air conditioning system in this building completely, which, again, you know, we weren't due to do it when the pandemic came, when we were forced, you know, to use MRR13 filters and really kind of tax a system that was not designed for that. It kind of probably sped up the timeline on when it needed to be done, but you know, we've been able to do it through grant funding, which, you know, is a little more manageable for us. Chuck's going to just explain some of the CARISA funding.
Okay, so just a couple of brief points. This is the CARISA funding, the coronavirus response money. You see half of roughly the American Rescue Plan, so our budget is the $524,064. Same initial date, March 2020 is when you, how far back with the expenses you can go. Just a quick note, a lot of the, both these grants are not going to go back to March of 2020. We had another funding source, the CARES funding, so that, we put in a lot of the PPE, these, any supply, a lot of supplies that we did spend towards that end of the year. So a lot of this grant is basically, both these grants are starting basically in the 21-22 year, yes, basically in the 21-22 year. Same thing, federal funding, subject to an additional audit, and as you see, this one ends September 23, a year earlier than the American Rescue Plan. Same procedures for claiming funds and so forth as the American Rescue Plan.
So as you can see with some of the pictures in the presentation, I'm just going to flick back one slide, but you know, some of our opportunities that we've been able to provide by either shifting things into different grants or paying for things in this grant that we had in other grants, we rented bicycles for our high school program for about a month, and our kids have been riding to the beach, and you know, they seem to enjoy it a lot. I was out there a couple of times, David can probably speak about it better than me, and we're looking at trying to do And we're looking at trying to do that a little more consistently as part of our phys ed program. We also brought kids to adventure parks, and we did climbing activities, and, you know, we did this with either grant funding from these two, or something that we, we put it into another grant that we had shifted something out of into these two, and allocated the money for it. But those are the pictures that you'll see throughout the presentation, are of many of those activities, or the tech pieces, and, or the summer enrichment program, or the STEM stuff that we've done. So, some of the allowable activities that we've engaged in, and these are really just a small piece of them, there's a whole bunch of other ones that we've worked on. We couldn't really go into everyone, preventing COVID-19 by purchasing supplies, sanitation. Again, like Chuck mentioned, that first year, there was some grant funding that they gave that districts used. After the 2020 year, you know, we can, we've been utilizing these funds. Purchasing, again, educational technology, our first purchase of educational technology came out of this grant, because this grant came prior to the other one. Addressing the academic impact and loss of instruction, again, whether that was using iTutor over the summer, or hiring our tutors to remotely do credit recovery over the summer, you know, or bringing them in and having them work with kids after school or remotely after school. Planning and implementing different activities related to summer learning and enrichment and supplemental after-school programs. So, the grants are similar, but not the same. You know, we have to put in a budget for all of them. I did ask Chuck to put together a timeline of the two grants, just so you can see, really, when they, when they came about. You know, it's interesting to just keep in mind that some of these dates, when they came to us and when we were asked to put in applications, were months after the grant actually started. You know, it took sometimes months for them to even give us an allocation, yet we were allowed to use it from three months prior, or we were supposed to start using it three months prior. So, if you want to go through the timeline, please.
Okay, again, just some couple of dates that I thought might, are good to know, starting, you know, going from left to right. March of 2021 is when it was actually signed into law. And again, with the date of March 2020, when the pandemic started, you can see, again, there was quite a bit of a lag before it went into law. In May of 2021 was the first application due on Part One. And again, the point is, to make is that it was a very short window. Usually the state education department's very good at giving directions on how to spend the money. However, the timing is sometimes what was lacking, so we were waiting, there was a lot of waiting going on, and then when it finally came up, it was almost like a rush deal to get things done very quickly, and we tried to do it as best we can, which I think we, again, we did a good job. And again, it's ever-changing, we're going to constantly monitor what we can spend and all the different rules and applications. So for, like in November of 2021, it was the second part, another piece, some information was required that we did complete. And September 2023, again, that's important to me, that's the last date we can obligate the funds for CARISA. Again, obligate, right, just means, means incurred, something like, if you want, you have supplies, you need to order it before that, or if there's services, it needs to be done before that date. And September 24th to the right, that's the American Rescue Plan, same thing, last date, as I mentioned, that's the last one. We definitely want to spend the CARISA first, since, again, it has the earlier date. So again, those are just some important dates that I thought just would be good to know.
So this is just an example of, you know, as you saw in the timeline, they announced the grant, they passed it a few months later, then they gave us guidelines, and we had to have our spending plan in in about three weeks. The nice part about grants in New York State is, you can put your spending plan in, and then you can, you know, you can amend it at different times when you need to change it for different things. So what we did is we sat down and we allocated every cent that they gave to us, and eventually, after a couple of revisions and providing them with more information, we were approved for the 52464. As we, you know, as we find that we don't necessarily utilize certain amounts of money, we put it in amendment, we change it. That's what we did with the bicycles this year, or things like that. And, you know, that's what we'll continue to do, because, you know, they're offering us this money to our community, you know, so we're going to end up utilizing it within the guidelines that they give us. You can also see that our proposed expenditures, again, our summer enrichment, that was for, you know, the length of the grant, after-school credit recovery, our ed technology flows through next year. You know, our UNIVAN controls, the tennis courts, the different construction pieces that we are entitled to do, we put in to this grant, and then sports equipment and supplies. That's where you see some of the things that we went out and purchased for our classes and our kids, or rented. The scope and the tutoring is going to end up being amended, because our childcare grant was tripled this year from the state. So we don't necessarily need this money to make sure that we can accommodate anybody that wants to be in before care, because we were given enough funding to do almost double what we have signed up for already. So what we'll do is, you know, we will, throughout the next year, figure out something that will serve our community that fits within our grant, and we'll reallocate it and put in an amendment for it. So, these are just examples of the expenditure, you know, we put in, it's like a 15-page report that you put in. Lisa helps us with all of them, because she does all of our grant work. And, you know, then sometimes you get kicked back some questions, you answer them, and ours have both been approved for us to spend the money. So, that's where we're at. If the board has any questions, if the community has any questions, please reach out to me. You know, if there are more technical financial questions, I'll make sure that Chuck gets back down to them. If not, I'll be happy to answer them for you. You know, the grant funding has, although it is kind of tight, and it's a bit of a squeeze at times, and a bit of a mad rush, it's well worth it for the amount of money over the three-year period. It will end up serving our, you know, community well for many years to come.
Thank you.
Sixth grade moving up was wonderful the other day. It's really great to see us getting back to doing things live. I'm going to share with you a couple of dates from a couple of the end-of-the-year celebrations that we've been at, because it made me feel very old when I heard them, and so I thought I would share them with other people, too, so that I'm not the only one. Our pre-K moving up ceremony congratulated the class of 2035 from Southold High School the other day over at the elementary school, and yesterday at both of our kindergarten moving up ceremonies, they congratulated the class of Southold High School for 2034. So it was great to see the little kids. It's also great to see the older kids senior breakfast today, and graduation rehearsal, and all sorts of different activities, all live, all with some really nice energy and great to see. So the end-of-the-year field day, it's all really moving along very nicely, and it's nice to see people getting back to what we would consider normal, and really enjoying themselves and enjoying each other. It's been a trying couple of years. We should be really proud of our district, our kids, our teachers, all of our employees. You know, it's been handled as well as it possibly can, and it's really, really nice to see everybody. I do believe we're all ready for a break, you know, but watching the end-of-the-year activities that are going on are really enjoyable, and I look forward to graduation on Saturday with Mr. Rush and his crew.
Thank you, Dr. Morrow. That brings us to personnel. We have some additions here for the coming into the summer. We've got Joseph Krimi and Caitlin Appel for guidance days over the summer. I'm not going to read all the dates, obviously. And then we've got summer extended-year service, special ed and related services. We've got provisions for CE, SPE, and PCSE over the summer, summer support services. Credit, what is credit recovery?
So, so we have, we have students that do their seat time. You know, they participate in a class all year, but they have not met the level to be able to gain credit to graduate from New York State. So, they don't have to retake the course, and many of them have actually passed a Regents exam, but they have to pass the course. So they have to do assignments and work with a teacher so they can recover the credit for a class that they have already taken, and then this will set them back on track for graduation.
Is that something new?
It's not something new. It was more traditionally done through summer school. I don't think we did in-house credit recovery in the past. It's not, it's not a new thing.
So it is, it's new to Southold.
It's new to Southold. It's not really a new concept, but it is new to Southold.
So, these staff members are working over the summer to get these kids caught up?
Many of them will work remotely, some of them will work live in person, and kids will complete a specified number of assignments to a certain level, and then they will be able to attain the credit for those classes.
I do have a question about the EYS. There's a speech therapist and a physical therapist. Are they staff? We don't have physical therapists and speech therapists on staff, right? So?
Yeah, we do.
Speech therapist, not speech teacher?
Speech, language pathologist, and speech therapist are, it's an interchangeable title, right?
Okay. Right. Okay, because I'm used to it being, speaking.
Physical therapist is a, we contract.
Okay, so that, but that would, that shouldn't be under this, then? That should be under contracted services, shouldn't it? This make it, makes it look like it's an employee of the district.
What's that?
The physical therapist. All the others are employees of the district, right?
Yep.
So that should really be a contracted service.
Physical.
I'm looking under summer, under 16.3, summer 2022, EYS, Special Education and Related Services, because they're all employees except for the physical therapist. I think that we should just pull that and put it as a contracted service, because it's not an employee.
Right, yeah.
Am I right?
You have it under employees entering the district.
And it's not an employee entering the district, it's a contracted service.
We should stop listing all that, right?
Right, I'm just, but my point is, it's not an employee.
Yeah, we'll, we'll remove it, we'll.
We can just amend it.
We can amend it right now.
Right now. It's a contracted service, not an employee entering the district.
Very good.
I don't want to be a nitpicker, it's just, it's.
Just a few, can you plug in a minute?
Right, right.
That you've amended it.
So just note that that position is.
I do have a question about the credit recovery as well. Do you have any idea how many students we're talking about that need this credit recovery? I'm just curious.
We're still waiting for final grades come in, and a lot of them are attached to Regents exams that are being scored, and then we send them to BOSI's for the actual grades. Typically, it's not a lot of students or many students, and what is very helpful about it is, historically, we've had students that might have to repeat courses, which takes up valuable time in your schedules the following school year.
Sure, no, no, I understand that. Now, it'd be, I would just be interested to know how many in each area we have at something, you know, once we're said and done, if we could, please?
Last year, we got a total of seven students participating, being contracted with iTutor, and this year, we decided to do it in-house?
Okay. So we could theoretically, there's a possibility that not all of these teachers will be utilized.
Not all, not theoretically, not all of them will be utilized.
Okay, so that's what, I just would like to, so we have a number, last year was seven. I would love to hear what the number is, and if we could find out what the content areas are that we, you know, if there's a consistency, or, you know, things like that. So if we could find that out after, after all said and done, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right, let's, let's do a motion for those recommendations so far, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we've got management confidential salary adjustments for the, for the management and confidential employees, Jennifer Brewer, Patricia D. Gregorio, and Erica Frank. Is there a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The third contract for Dr. Simonetti, a motion to approve Dr. Simonetti's contract through June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
A second? Done? All in favor?
Aye.
The Juneteenth holiday, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby determines that based upon present circumstances and based upon the best interest of its employees and the community at large, Juneteenth shall be a day off on June 20th, 2022. This day off is expressly limited to the 2021-2022 school year. It's not intended to bind the Board of Education in future years. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Summer enrichment camp, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes those administrators who supervise a 2022 summer enrichment camp to be paid an extra 250 days per day above their contractual salary for each day that they work in such capacity. It is, it being understood that for each of these days of the summer enrichment program, there shall be one administrator assigned to this supervisory function each day. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And new business.
What is the board's idea or opinion of hosting an active shooter drill sometime in the fall?
A what?
Active shooter.
I think it's a great idea.
We, we held, we held on with, or at Greenport in May, early June, whatever, and I think we had 69 cops go through, associated agencies and whatnot, and I believe 10 or 12 civilians, not including media. But in those, of those 10, Ryan Case went through, and Phil, I don't recall his last name, but he's a new business guy in Greenport, and they had a new appreciation for what, what goes on in an active shooter, but I'm trying to set one up for the fall, and it's really, it would be on either a Saturday or Sunday, preferably. The guys come in, they set up, well, it takes several visits from emergency services to just get a lay of the school and how they want to set things up, so it flows. They clean up, it's really not that messy. We would probably need some students, or I should, we, students make it better, as actors and whatnot. I don't have all the details right now, but I just want to gauge, you know, what everybody's thoughts would be. I would highly recommend it, whether it's here or Madetuck or wherever, that if it's ever open to an administrator or teachers, that they go through it as well. You can go through it as an observer, or you can go through it as a shooter, a good guy shooter. No, a good guy who shoots the bad guy. But it's invaluable experience, I think, but I just want, I didn't want to even ask the emergency services without the okay from you guys.
I support it.
And we, and you guys, everybody here can go through it. I mean, they will accommodate anything we wish, so.
Scott, you're part of our safety, security committee anyway, correct? And, you know, if it's, especially if you're recommending it, and that's what you feel deemed, I would support that, and, you know, you working on that with Dr. Morrow, and, you know, making it happen.
Thank you. Good stuff, thanks. Finance committee report?
There is none.
Building committee?
Nothing to report.
Policy committee?
Nothing.
No second hearing of visitors, we have no visitors. Okay. That brings us to our board member commentary. Mr. Okula down there. First of all, I want to thank you for not only attending all year, I think this may be one meeting, but for attending tonight, because you're checked out, and I'm very impressed, and I'm grateful that you're here this evening. Thank you.
Of course, thank you guys. I was going to say, thank you guys all year for inviting me to sit up with you. It's been a pleasure sharing everything that's been happening in the school, hearing everything that you guys have been discussing, everything in the school. But yes, I just really thank you for always inviting me up here. Dr. Morrow talked about it before, it was really just a nice school year after the past couple of years. Obviously, they've been a little challenging with COVID and everything. This school year, we were in school the whole time, obviously, everything wasn't completely normal, we were still wearing masks at the beginning of the year, but this was, felt like a school year where we really got back to as close to normalcy as possible, which was really nice, and it was nice to have that as my senior year after the past couple of years, obviously, still good experience, and yeah, I just, my overall experience at Southold, my family's been here for many years, and I have you guys to thank, the Board of Education, everyone a part of the Southold community, just for a great number of years here at Southold, everything about it's been such a great experience. So yeah, just overall, thank you guys, and.
What are your plans post-graduation?
I'm going to the University of Rhode Island for sports, media, and broadcasting.
Oh, that's awesome. It'd be very successful. Media and broadcasting.
And what kind of broadcast?
Media and broadcasting.
Sports media.
Sports media and broadcasting. Didn't your brother go to school for that as well?
Yeah, he went to sports journalism, yeah.
Okay. Well, congratulations. We want to wish you the best of everything. Thank you for your time. Mr. Latham?
I'd just like to wish all the graduates much success, and it was a great year, and what a difference a year can make, especially since the way it started and the way it's finishing. So, everybody did a great job of adapting, and again, you can't thank enough to the administration, the state.
to the administration, the staff, the faculty, and especially the, the custodians that did all the cleaning, and did all the yeoman work, and tried to make this place as normal as possible from the beginning, and that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Krim?
Echo Scott, congratulations to our soon-to-be graduates, it's my favorite event of the year, going to graduation, it really is special, it's like, it's like a, it's like a family reunion almost, and everybody have a great summer.
I think they said it all, have a great summer, it was finally another really, really good year, very happy that even the bad years, or what we call the abnormal years, we, everybody in this community did everything they could to still make even bad things good, and it shows when you come out the other side, that everybody is still able to pick up and do the things that we've done in Southold this past year, so very proud to be part of this community, and like Dr. Krim, graduation day is like my favorite day, because you really do just get to sit back and say, wow, there's a real reason why we're here, and it makes sitting here really worth it, so have a great summer, everybody, and thank you.
I echo all those thoughts, congratulations to the seniors, congratulations to our retirees, much appreciation to the staff at all levels, we are a K through 12 district, even though we're in Southold. Just think it's important to say thank you to everybody, and I know the summer's when a lot gets done, and another thank you to our community, because when you looked at these athletes, especially, not especially, in the track and field, and all of those events, if they didn't support our bond for that track and field, those athletes would not be doing what they were doing, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that offering for them, and it's because the community supported that project years ago, and it came to fruition, and I love to see the numbers out there taking advantage of it, so just a thanks to the community, because without them, it doesn't happen, and a motion to adjourn, and we need to go back to executive session, so, second? All in favor?
Aye.